Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for this regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD. Today's date is April 20th, 2021, and the time is 6 o'clock. If you will all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board. I am so, so proud to report that we have received just so much overwhelming positive response to our State of the District address, which we broadcast on our website this year due to the pandemic, which was on last Thursday. I mean, just the positive comments that we received from parents, from employees, and the community, I mean, they've just been heartwarming and they just keep coming on. And I've received so many today as well. I mean, it's just truly, truly heartwarming. I do want to thank our America's High School Orchestra who gave an outstanding performance, which set the tone for that great evening last Thursday. So a huge thank you and congratulations to all for, y'all hear me keep saying, for achieving success as a team. I also had the privilege to meet with our Bond Accountability Committee last night at Socorro High School. These are great, great community members and employees who worked so well together as a team to ensure that promises made, our promises kept for our 2017 Bonds Project. We had the opportunity to tour Socorro High School yesterday, and let me tell you, it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility for Socorro students and entire community. So I'm so happy, so happy for that entire Socorro community. There are some very exciting times here in our school district, along with all the work from the 2017 bond that's taken place across our entire school district. Now, due to the, changing the subject a little bit, due to the pandemic, you know, we were not able to hold our Spring Games in honor of James Butler in person like we always do, and it's one of my favorite events of the year. But let me tell you, we stayed true, in true Team SISD fashion, we held drive-by parades at all of our high schools in which we distributed medals to our amazing Spring Game athletes. And our Labor of Love via our Spring Games parades with parents, students, and staff participating was a complete, complete success. The fun that we saw on those children's faces when they were driving up and the cheerleaders, the band, the excitement, I mean, it's just something that I'll never, never, never forget. Great job by all who put it together, and obviously, great, I want to thank all of our parents and especially our amazing students who drove by on that Friday. Now, we'll continue to shine the spotlight on the amazing people in our school district by hosting a recognition parade for all of our outstanding partners in education this Friday, April 23rd. As I, y'all heard me say, in our school district, we take great pride in giving credit where credit is due by loving on our people. And on that note, one of my favorite, another favorite event of the year is our Teacher of the Year Gala. We usually have it down at the Convention Center in downtown El Paso. It's going to take place this Thursday. It's not going to happen over there, obviously, because of the pandemic. It'll be done virtually. Last year, our PR team, our Public Relations team, they set the bar extremely high for our incredible Teacher of the Year event, and I'm confident that this year's going to be just as great. I can't wait. We'll be getting information out for people to tune in to see who is the Teacher of the Year for Elementary and also the Teacher of the Year for Secondary. But as everyone hears me say, in my book, they are all, all winners, all winners. So exciting times. It is an honor for me tonight to also shine the spotlight on our incredible students, our incredible educators, Covert Regional, statewide, and also national accolades and recognition. But obviously, due to the pandemic, we have not been able to bring them in here in the boardroom. However, they're still deserving of their widely, of being widely recognized in our school community. And to honor our students and staff who've earned recent achievements, we posted an article on our website, along with an animated presentation. We're also sharing it on our social media accounts, our district's social media accounts. So please share the stories. So this month, we are honoring five students who won top awards in the 2021 Trash to Treasure Art Citywide Contest. So congratulations to all those artists. Also, 46 SISD high school students placed in the Regional Academic Decathlon, a 10-event rigorous scholastic competition. In addition, three SISD teams, which was Missionary Cottage High School for small division, Eldorado High School, medium division, and Montwood High School, large division, they swept the entire, the entire region. Wow. You know, that's, you know, they could say, that's what we're talking about. So great job to those students and those campuses. Also, 26 middle school students were finalists in the Do the Right Thing Regional Essay Contest. So congratulations to those awesome writers. Also, the Pebble Hills High School Student Council, they won the 2021 National Gold Council of Excellence Award from the National Student Council. So congratulations to Pebble Hills High School Student Council. Also, Eastlake High School, I was at this game, it was an exciting, exciting game, Eastlake High School Varsity Girl Soccer, the team, they earned the UIL 6A Bi-District Championship during their awesome 2020, 2021 season. So congratulations to the Eastlake High School Varsity Girl Soccer Team. Also, the Montwood High School Varsity Boy Soccer Team also had an outstanding season. They earned the UIL 6A Bi-District Championship. So congratulations to the Rams Boy Soccer Team from Montwood High School. Also Pebble Hills High School Varsity Soccer Team, they had an outstanding season, earning the UIL 6A Bi-District Championship. So congratulations to Pebble Hills High School Boy Soccer. And the Eastlake High School Varsity Boy Soccer Team, they had a stellar season and reached, check this out, they reached the Elite Eight in State 6A Playoffs. Yes. You know, they won their district, their district championship, bi-district championship, area championship, and regional finalists as well. I mean, they went deep to the Final Eight in the great state of Texas. And this is their first year in 6A, because they were 5A last year. So that's a huge, huge accomplishment by the Eastlake High School Varsity Boy Soccer Team. Congratulations to Coach Gibby and the entire team. And last, but definitely not least, our SISD Fine Arts Department earned its fifth consecutive, five in a row, Best Communities for Music Education Award from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. So congratulations to our entire SISD Fine Arts Department. Fantastic job. Again, all of these incredible awards and recognition continue to show why our school district, Socorro ISD, is the right choice for endless opportunities. So we're beyond proud for every single student, every single employee that participated, coach, teacher, staff member, for their perseverance, their hard work that enables them to soar to the top of the charts. So way to go, Team SISD. So congratulations to all of our superstars. That concludes my comments for this evening, President Nahara. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. If we can have a great big hand for all of our amazing students. Okay, we'll move on with item number four, Open Forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the Board during Open Forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the Board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you, and let's proceed to Open Forum. Our first speaker tonight is Michael Hurdell. Sorry, I apologize, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hurdick. I'm a former, I'm a retired music teacher and now a substitute with the Socorro, great Socorro. I want to thank you all for your dedication and service for the Socorro Independent School District. My concern today is for the payroll errors which happened this past December, 2020. This happened to other substitutes also, and as I understand it, and it was explained to me, due to the district internet shutdown in December, the payroll department did not have access to the hours worked by substitute teachers. Even though they had good intentions, even though they had good intentions, the district paid the same amount in December as we got paid in the November paycheck, and some of us didn't work the same hours in the December. But in some case, and also the same dollar amount was overpaid by the district for substitutes. And so it is my contention now that the payroll department should forgive any remaining debt incurred or what's left of any debt of these substitute teachers. We came in person and answered the call for in-person teaching, which our students, especially the young ones, desperately need. Technology is fallible and is no substitute for in-person, hands-on learning, especially pre-kindre and kindergarten students. No computer will replace the important and guiding skills such as social interactions and handwriting, for instance. And if you will permit me just for a minute to go off topic slightly, but it is related, when I teach social studies, sometimes I choose a famous quote from Abraham Lincoln, and here it is. "When you call a tail on a dog a leg," how many legs does a dog have? Five? No, four. Calling a tail a leg doesn't make it so. This message and moral lesson here by Lincoln can be applied to students of all ages and parents and adults. I have noticed parents question sometimes terminology used by the education system in general, and I suspect they may be wary of statements such as best practices or reimagine. So definitely question the spending of money, whether it be unlimited raising of school tax funds, we're all taxpayers, purchasing software, or unlimited purchase of new computers. And I just want to say kudos for the school district. This is one of the most innovative, I'm going to finish with that, implementing the year-round schooling, which other districts in the region have it, on which nationally they would recognize that, and also the late start for high school, which is scientifically valid, scientifically based. Thank you all for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker is Angelica Soto.
Oh, I think she's here. Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. I am very happy to be here with you, as it has been a unique time in our lives, so it is great to see all of you. Isn't it great to be alive? I know many have lost their lives and loved ones, but we take it a day at a time. We have to hold all the people we have relationships with just a little closer and cherish those relationships all the more. It also reminds us of what is really important in our lives and where we should be putting most of our effort. Tell us how you spend, I'm sorry, tell us how you spend your time and money, and we know what, then we know what is important to you, which leads us to the money. It's that time of the year when decisions have to be made for salary increases. As anyone who shops has become aware, prices are rising on all the essentials. An article appeared in a trusted periodical, The Week, stating that the cost of living increase will be going up to 3% according to the Social Security Administration. You have probably already experienced this when purchasing those essentials, not to mention the increase in the valuation of your property. Because it is almost certain that prices will continue to rise, we respectfully request that you consider a 4% increase in salaries for all SISD employees for the 2021-2022 school year. We would also respectfully ask that you consider now or in the future the hourly wages paid to our cafeteria and crossguard monitors, whose starting salary is $7.25. These employees, who are not entitled to any benefits, are some of the first employees who arrive at the campuses. They are critical to keeping our students safe in the morning crush of traffic when many parents are in a hurry to get to work. They are out there, rain or shine, no matter the weather. Another position SEA would respectfully ask you to consider, sorry, are the bus drivers to full-time employees. Although 99% of them average 40 hours a week, they are classified as part-time, so they are only paid when they work, which are 187 days. If classified full-time, their salary would be divided to pay them the entire year. This way, they would have a salary during the breaks. It proved to be a harrowing experience when the bus drivers went without any pay for three months this past year. They are also critical in keeping our students safe. The cafeteria workers have also gone above and beyond as they prepare meals for six days while only working and getting paid for five days. During intercession, they even prepared meals for 10 days in five days. SISD teachers have worked tirelessly this unprecedented year to reach all students, many times neglecting their own families to ensure they prepared lessons and endeavor to keep their students engaged and learning. They came through with absolutely no advance warning or training. Everyone was learning as they went along. Our district leadership has been outstanding in navigating these unfamiliar waters to keep everyone safe while looking out for our very stressed-out teachers. Kudos to our employees who came in when the district was closed down, who were putting their health at risk. Hopefully, those employees will be shown the district's appreciation in additional compensation. For time's sake, I have to limit it to just some examples of how all employees pull through to continue the work of the district. Show your appreciation to all SISD employees who work through difficult circumstances and who need just compensation to support their families. Dr. Espinoza, thank you for your leadership throughout this pandemic and doing everything possible to keep everyone safe. It was a difficult situation to manage, striving to keep everyone safe while also keeping up with the demands of the state. Finally, last but not least, our outstanding board members, who always do the right thing by our students and employees within the constraints of how Texas districts are underfunded. Our union continues to lobby and fight for the federal monies which rightly should be distributed to the districts in our state. SEA respectfully requests that the Board do the right thing once more and approve a 4% increase for all employees. We thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Item number five, Board of Trustees Business A, Consider Approval of Proclamation for
Now, that's the kind of person that doesn't trust the person who was speaking right today. She's like, "I love y'all, but I'm wiping it down my face."
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board. Thank you so much. We're here today to seek your approval, consideration for the proclamation of National School Nurse Day, which is going to be May 12th this year. And we do have one of our SISD students, Mrs. Annika Rueda. She's a sixth grade at Montwood High School. She is the daughter of one of our school nurses from O'Shea, Ms. Melanie Rueda. Annika holds the number-one spot in her sixth-grade class with the highest GPA. And she's going to do us the honor of reading the proclamation.
Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they're at school, and whereas all students have the right to their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting, and whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has emphasized the essential role school nurses play in student health and academic success, and whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years, and whereas school nurses address the home and community factors like social determinants that impact students' health, and whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children, and whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care, with children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams like School Health Services 504, IEP, Disaster and Emergency Planning, to address the school population, and whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day, therefore be resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates the acknowledgements, the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools, and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn, to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Now therefore, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, a School Nurse Day in Texas, and commend its observance to all citizens.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Mr. Ganada. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara.
Ms. Rodriguez.
I would like to commend all our nurses and our staff who, from the very beginning, we just want to say thank you all so very much. You were on the front lines, you were the ones that were accepting employees onto campuses, taking temperatures, making sure everybody was masking up. So thank you all so, so, so very much for everything you have done, working on the E-Swipe and everything else that you all have done. Thank you. I mean, not just everybody in the district, but, you know, again, we've been hearing through our Administrative Services Committee, everything that the nurses have done, and, you know, so thank you all. This is, the proclamation is just one day, I know, but just know that we appreciate everything that you all are doing on a daily basis.
Thank you, and we thank you for your support.
Absolutely.
And I would like to share a letter that I received today from one of our parents, which brought a smile and this warmth in my heart.
Good afternoon, Ms. Madrid. I am a teacher at Montwood High School, and last Saturday, I took my son to the district police station on Joe Battle to receive his COVID vaccine. I just wanted to let you know that we were both very impressed with the courtesy, professionalism, and kindness of the entire staff. The process was incredibly quick and easy, and I would just like to say thank you to everyone involved. This is a stressful and unprecedented time for us, but the experience was overwhelmingly positive, especially for my son, who was a little nervous about being vaccinated. We appreciate it, all the smiles. Keep up the good work. Thank you, and I hope you have a blessed day. Micah Seberg.
Very cool. Very good. Very cool. And as Ms. Rodriguez said, y'all are always essential and important to our district, to our parents, our students, our staff. But this past year, y'all have met every challenge that has been thrown at you.
Literally thrown.
And gone above and beyond for everyone to stay safe, and we are deeply grateful for all of your work and the fact that you're still smiling through it. It is amazing. And Annika, thank you so very much. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Let's make it official. I do have the motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Mr. Ganada. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay, item B, Report and Announcement of Board Member Continuing Education Credit Hours. As required by the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 61.1J, I will announce the completed, deficient, and exceeded continuing education credits for each of our trustees. The following information is required to be reflected in the minutes of tonight's meeting and will be available for local media. Each year, we're required to complete one hour of cybersecurity training, and that was completed by all board members. Every other year, we're required to have one to two hours of post-legislative update after a legislative session, and being that we're in a legislative session as we speak, that will be done next year. So we are exempt from that this year. We are required to have one-hour training of child abuse prevention, and that has been completed by all board members. Evaluating and Improving Student Outcomes is a three-hour course that we're required to have every other year. It has been completed by Mr. Morales, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Mina, and Ms. Rodriguez. It is scheduled to be completed in May of 2021 by myself, Mr. Geta, and Mr. Ganada. Team Building is three-hour training every year, and that has been completed by all board members. And we have to have an additional five hours on assessment needs, and that has been exceeded by myself, exceeded by Mr. Morales, exceeded by Mr. Geta, exceeded by Mr. Ganada, completed by Mr. Garcia, exceeded by Mr. Mina, and exceeded by Ms. Rodriguez. Okay? We don't have to accept that, it's just a report that has to be in the minutes. Okay, we will move on to item number six, District Reports A, Facilities Report. Mr. Eington.
My report is on, continues on page 11 of your report. And we have some slides to show to you.
No ruse. No ruse.
The first project, it's kind of out of sequence, that's the order that you got in your book. This presentation, as Dr. Espinoza explained a few minutes ago, was given to the Bond Accountability Committee meeting last night at Socorro High School. So it goes in that order because we've, we left Socorro High School at the end because we went on a tour of the facility. So we'll start with Montwood High School. Montwood High School is moving along. We are accepting certain areas of it, it's being completed. You can see that this is the front from overlooking Montana, and, I mean, not Montwood, and looking down at the front of the school. And then we've got the band room and the classroom on the second floor. You can see that these rooms are essentially completed. We are punching those out. We are getting ready to turn those over to the campus. We've got the kitchen area, the serving lines, and the bistro. These are areas that are also completed. You've seen some of the graphic work that we did in the bistro, and I believe you'll see that in this picture, where we extended the seating area into the old theater and created a more seating capacity with the and created a more seating capacity with the bistro. Like I said, there's a lot of work going on. A lot of the interior building is being into finished work. We also are working on the exterior to finalize that and we're doing roofing on the exterior too. The next project is Americas High School. Americas High School is coming along. We are looking at taking, we have taken some possessions of that facility, the CTE area and some of the interior work. And we are continuing to work on the finishes on that school, that project, and we will continue to do punch lists and work in finishing out that project. As you can see, the Fine Arts Edition along Peter Cooper is there and then the right-hand picture is the two-story science lab, I mean, excuse me, the food and the general's lab, which was an alternate that we accepted. And you can see this project is moving along and we are doing a lot of interior finish work. There's, you've got the new science labs in Area C and then we've got the Fine Arts Corridor. As you can tell by these pictures, they're in the finished state. So we are making a lot of progress on these projects because we were able to get in and expedite the program. There's the choir room and then the new sound panels in the band room. The next project is El Dorado High School. We are completing that project. A lot of work has been completed in the CTE building. I'll show you some pictures in a minute. We are continuing to work on the interior, enlarge the cafeteria area to increase that capacity at El Dorado. There's the guitar and choir area and of course, the CTE building. And then the picture on the left-hand side is the football locker room. This was one of the areas that did not have refrigerated air. We had evaporated cooling. So you can see the ductwork installation going on and we're working on the lockers to improve that, to bring that up to our similar facilities and have refrigerated air at El Dorado. The concession building with the outside area out by the playfills is being completed. And then you can see our new science building, two-story labs on the first and second floor and the exterior of it. Family Science and the flower shop. This is in the CTE building. This is a standalone building. So you can see that this building is almost completed. We're doing punch work and finalizing that building. There's the animal science and robotics. The next project is our new Student Activity Center. This project is still in design. We are not in design, we're in the actual construction documents, preparing the project to put out for bid. And we're hoping to put that out to bid this summer and award it hopefully in August. And then it'll be, it'll take till May of '23 to complete. It'll take a little over 20 months, once it's awarded, to complete the construction. And y'all have seen some of these pictures before. This is an aerial looking at the new SAC, SAC number two. The area to the left is the amphitheater, which is between the new SAC and the existing SAC. This shows the area, the oval-shaped white area is naturally, that's the existing SAC. And then the rendered out area is the new SAC. I know these are small floor plans, but you can see the, up on top of the page, that's the concession restroom area with the press box up above that on the, in between the new SAC and the existing SAC. To the left, that square or rectangle building is the new Fine Arts Facility. The lower level is all the athletic. The players will come directly off the field into those rooms. The second level is more of the Fine Arts area and then you can see those three big rooms on the second level that are rooms that can be divided into individual rooms, two rooms or one whole big open space. And then on the lower part of the page is the visitor concession and restroom area. And that's the second floor of the press box. That's a view looking from the Fine Arts Facility back towards the press box, the two-story structure. On the north side of the field, on the right hand of the picture, is our video board. The existing SAC is on the opposite side. This is just the entry into the Fine Arts Complex. The building on the right is the Fine Arts Building. The building in front is the new concession and press box area. This is the inside of the Fine Arts Facility. It'll have space for galleries and on the left-hand wall and on the right-hand wall, there'll be areas for displays of trophies and various awards. And the doors that you see there go into this big open area that could be either three rooms, two rooms, or one solid big room. And it overlooks facing north towards the video board overlooking the football field. This is kind of a picture inside at night from that room. And then this is a picture from the press box looking at the video board. The auxiliary gyms, we've made some progress on bid package one, which is Benito Martinez, Afita Chavez, Helen Ball, Leon Chavez, O'Shea Keller, and Robert Itoarte. We have completed those projects and have accepted those and have turned those over to the administration. And you can see that, you'll see some interior pictures and then you'll see the exterior. And I'll go through these fast. Afita Chavez, you can see that the students are already using them. You can see the three overhead doors. On a good day, calm day, you can open those up and go into the outside, in and out from the auxiliary gym. Helen Ball, Leon Chavez, O'Shea Keller, Leon Chavez, and Itoarte. The second bid package is bid package two. If COVID has hit us, it's probably hit this project harder than anybody else. And we are working diligently with the contractor to finish up these projects. And we hope to do that probably around June, to have these turned over to the district. As you can see, we've got Horizon Heights, Loma Verde, Port of Cooper. Cooper is one of four schools that had existing restrooms in their buildings that were, for years and years and years, they were just storage space. They were pretty bad, you know, for restrooms and things like that. So apart in the four, Project Cooper, Rojas, Escondrius, I believe it's O'Shea, are the four that we came in and renovated those schools, those restrooms and bring them up to code so they can be utilized by the students. This is Del Sol. This one was unique because we had to build a big retaining wall and it drops down to the playfield. But we got it in there and then the overhead doors are opening through the canopies. And Sierra Vista. The next set of projects are the auxiliary gyms that are associated or located in the valley. Compestry, Escondrius, Hilli, Waco, and Robert, Rojas. I am very pleased on the status of these constructions. Some of them are really moving fast. And you can see by the pictures, Compestry is, we're in foundation. This is about a week old. But here, Escondrius, we already got the walls up and we're doing structural steel. So these projects are really moving. HE Hilli is the same situation. We got the CMU walls up, preparing for the structural steel. Waco, same situation. And then Robert, Rojas, we were working on the foundation. The Support Service Complex, one outside here, we took a group of administrators through it on Friday to look at the progress and we are, we have ordered furniture for this project and we are awaiting the arrival of that furniture. And we are working to complete this project within the next 30 to 60 days. You see it outside. This is just some of the exterior. This is one of the interior. The one on the left is basically looking from the back entry. Those double doors, two sets of double doors, is actually the front doors out front here. And the picture on the right-hand side is that collaboration space, that wall that can open up and divide into two rooms or it can open up and flow into the lobby area to make a flexible space. The new combo school. We just started construction on this and you're going to be surprised what you see, hopefully. At least I was. That's the bird's eye view looking at the elementary school. And you can see that we've got panels erected, we've got steel erected. And you can see on the left-hand side of the picture, a lot of the panels have been poured in preparation to be erected. This is kind of at 30,000 feet. You come in a little bit closer, you can see the structural steel going up. And you can see, this is elementary and it's working towards the middle school, which is up to the upper part of the plan. And then you can see the elementary classroom wing. And then you can see some of the middle school Fine Arts area. We had to construct the middle school Fine Arts area in order to complete some of the mechanical systems and stuff. As I stated, the elementary will open in 20, July 2022, and the middle school will open in December 2022. A couple more pictures. Okay. Yesterday, as Dr. Espinoza mentioned, we toured the facility at Socor High School. And the Bond Accountability Committee, I guess we had, I don't know, 50 or 60 people there. We had two groups of, three groups of people going around with the architects and the contractor viewing the site. We have turned over some of the areas already, you know, so we have partial acceptance on some of these buildings. Not only Socor with the athletic and the softball, baseball field, band marching area, but we also have it at El Dorado, Americas, and Montwood. This shows the main corridor and the FLS living room. So you can see that a lot of finish work is beginning with the drywall and the tile work going up in the areas. The women's restrooms, you can see that all the tile work is coming up. And then you can see what a typical classroom. We've got a lot of ceilings dropped, grid dropped. We're working with our technology department in order to get the data cable installed before the ceilings go in. Fire science, the art room. We were in one of these rooms last night. We took two of the art rooms in order to conduct our meeting. Auto classroom, the auto tech lab, we're preparing to put down the flooring in the auto tech lab and the diesel mechanic lab. The journalism design and the black box. The black box, we are working on to complete it in order for them to have a actual theater and use the cafeteria as their auditorium when the existing auditorium is taken out of commission. And we start to work on that. This shows an aerial of the site looking back towards. You can see the baseball fields, tennis courts, and of course, the band marching room. The next one is what I want to show you. The road in the middle. I didn't say anything about that. I want to show you the real vista and our three crossings that we've crossed the canal and completed. They are not opened up yet, but we were under the gun with the waterboard to complete those by the end of March. And we turned them over right at that time. And you can see our entrances into the various locations. And yes, the two tennis courts, I mean, basketball courts.
Those are some beautiful basketball courts.
The remaining projects are, tonight, I will be presenting you Pebble Hills, field modification and sports lighting, Eastlake High School, sports lighting for approval, and then the transportation facility we are in design with and the SISD maintenance facility. We are just now starting the design work. I, just a quick overview is, there are 29 projects a part of the 2017 bond. We will be, we're just now starting our third year into the bond. In November, it will be four years. This bond is a five-year program. We have seven projects completed with many partial completions, as I stated. There are 17 projects still in the construction. We, hopefully tonight, there will be two more awarded so we can begin construction on the Pebble Hills and Eastlake. There are three projects in design, the SAC, the canopy at the transportation, and Socor maintenance facility. Brings it to a total of 29 projects. And at that, that completes my presentation. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Eington?
No, just to let him know that those basketball courts look beautiful.
Yes, President Nahara?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Eington, could you put that back, that slide back, the last slide? Because in the room, we have some amazing employees from our transportation department. And just, could you remind us in what the transportation facility and also the maintenance?
Yes. The transportation facility, we are going to enclose the, there's two buildings in the transportation area. I'll have a drawing of it the next time. And we're basically going to cover that as a maintenance canopy or work area. We're also going to be upgrading some of the electrical and some of the compressors and things that the mechanics use. But basically, it is a covered canopy to help the mechanics in inclement weather or hot weather.
Right. And the second one?
The second one is the maintenance facility where we're going to relocate some of the departments down in the valley.
Right.
Into a centralized location. We're looking at, we're doing the data studies. We're meeting with various departments and we're gathering that information and, you know, to help design that facility.
Yes. So, and thank you, Mr. Eington. And yesterday, as Mr. Eington mentioned, we presented to the Bond Accountability Committee. And again, we have some people from our transportation department. So back in 2016, 2017, we said, hey, we've got to make sure we take care of our awesome transportation. sure we take care of our awesome transportation department. And we, that, that was, we got to add that to the, to, to the bond because there is some, 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 some concerns with the heat, you know? So we got to build that, what you mentioned, that, that rooftop so they can have an excellent working conditions. But again, this, it's exciting to see, as you saw the pictures, all the work that's taking place. And I know in the room also, we have our, our association. So again, back in two thousand seventeen, it was a team effort, Team S I S D, our employees, our associations, you know, got behind to push for this bond, for all the work that's taking place. So it's a dream come true in my eyes to see everything that, 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 that is happening. I mean, it's truly overwhelming when you walk into Socorro High School and you see the state of art facilities that those students in that community are going to walk in, the work at Montwood, the work at Americas and, and all the auxiliary gyms, you know, and all the work that, that's taking place, you know? Now you, you see it's coming to, to fruition, the new high school. You know, we are a, you know, a destination school district. And when you have all these homes that are being built, you know, it's exciting, but it's also a challenge because you do not want to be caught as a school district, you know, saying, well, you didn't plan for all this, you didn't know all these homes were coming in because they want to bring your, their children to a Socorro I S D schools? And now we have overcrowded schools? No, we have to plan ahead. So that was part of this plan. And again, moving forward, moving forward, you see the growth, you know? You know, it's like, so we're going to have to probably need something down the future as well because the last thing we want is elementary schools to have a thousand students, a thousand one hundred because of school district. We, as a board, as a board, as administration and the trustees, we didn't plan correctly. So, you know, awesome planning back then, continues to move ahead. I mean, it's just awesome to see those, those slides. Thank you, Mr. Iton.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Iton?
Ms. Iton, I just wanted to say that it, it's amazing to see what maintenance and facilities and operations has been able to do over this past year. And, and I hadn't seen the new combo school. It's amazing to see those walls already going up. And Socorro High School is just massive and gorgeous. And y'all have done a great job in spite of COVID. You've still been able to move everything forward and keep everyone safe. And we are, we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll let my department know that.
Please do, thank you.
Item number seven, consent agenda. A, consider approval of board meeting minutes. Oh, sorry, no, just consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
Just seven E five C. Just had a question.
I'm sorry, what?
Seven, I'm sorry, E five C.
Any others?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Ganda and a second by Ms. Rodriguez to approve consent agenda with the exception of item E five C. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item five E C. Mr. Getta?
Mr. Iton, the only question I have regarding the portables, I saw seven hundred thousand dollars. Just how much does each portable cost?
Each portable costs around a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand.
So all you need is roughly six, seven?
Well, these are, that quote is actually for the modular building. And we need four modular classrooms to add to Shook. And then Ms. Macias and I are looking at four more modular building because we can do them a little bit cheaper than single portables. Four more at Rosco.
I thought these were actual portables, but these are portable classrooms.
No, these, this is, this, those quotes will be for modular building.
Got you, okay. So moved, thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item seven, new business. A, consider approval of professional contract recommendations for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer. And I am here tonight to present to you the list of professional certified contract recommendations for teachers, librarians, nurses, counselors, speech therapists, and educational diagnosticians that are recommended to receive their employment contract for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. On your Friday packet, you should have received the list of all employees that are going to be receiving their contract. The lists have been verified by the Department of H R. And at this time, administration is recommending your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Are you going to read all their names?
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? President Nahara? Ms. Rodriguez?
Okay, Mr. Campoya, this is my pet peeve, but on seven A, it reads, teachers, librarians, nurses, counselors, speech therapists. They're actually speech and language pathologists. Can we make that change to this? Just, I mean, I know it's a, it's just a semantics kind of thing, but they are speech and language pathologists.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you for standing up here, Rudy.
Thank you, Mr. Campoya. Item seven B, consider approval of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two employee compensation plan. Before we hear from Ms. Stiles.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Make a motion for percent employee compensation and a thousand dollar.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's, let's hear what she has to say first.
There's a motion on the table already?
Why the haste? Can we just listen before we make a motion? Let's, let's see what Ms. Stiles has to say first before we jump into.
There's a motion already on the table?
It's like a haster.
All right, I do have a motion.
Can you second a motion? There's not even a motion on there? Like, can you do that? Steve?
There is a motion for compensation.
Yeah, because Mr. Getta didn't even finish, so. Who seconded? I didn't even hear that.
I did.
I did, I thought, okay.
No, I did.
Okay.
We all did.
Yeah. I have a motion by Mr. Getta for four percent compensation. It was seconded by Mr. Ganda. But before we can continue with this, we have two speakers who have signed up to speak on this agenda item, and we do need to hear from Ms. Stiles. So, in that event, we greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. And thank you. Our first speaker on this agenda item is Tommy Hill.
Is it all right? I'm in six feet. And all I understand, while you guys are making a motion before we speak on the item, because you're saying four percent, I agree it should be more. Relief funds meant for public schools have been received in Texas. Our public schools need this money now to help them recover from effects of COVID nineteen pandemic. Funds are desperately needed for preparations of rigorous small group instructions, intensive summer tutoring programs for students, preparations for students, employee support needs to address the physical and mental health effect of the pandemic. Updates and supplies to ensure students and employees have safe and clean working, clean learning and working environments. Also, funds are redirected to the needs of our students through this pandemic. There were allocated funds that were not used for intended purposes. We saved funds on workbooks, we saved funds on campus supplies, maintenance, we saved funds on workshops and trainings and travels for employees, we saved funds on travel expenses for teams. I mean, the money that we saved is astronomical. In transportation, you've saved a lot of money, no overtime has been done for the most of the year. Anybody who knows about transportation, overtime runs because we run almost twenty-four seven, except for Sundays. And anybody who reads up on the fuel knows that that is one huge lump sum of money that has been saved. Now, where are these funds? Where do they go? Why are we not talking about that? Why is that not in there? Where's that go to next year? Goes to the general fund balance. So our students are always a priority, but our employees must be taken care of as well. During this time, our teachers, clerks, aides, diagnosticians, counselors, and numerous other employees invested in technology, materials, program supplies, computer mounted cameras, lights, headphones, and on and on, to provide on these instructions and support to our students and to each other. Many of our hourly employees suffered tremendous financial. I took the phone calls. I know, because after I took the phone calls, I was on there talking to our board members. Now, board members were talking to you, especially Ed Almena. He came through big time for us. Paul Garcia and Dave Morales, too. According to the Texas federal stimulus dollars by the school district, this school district has already received an extra ten million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars this year, above and beyond your normal wage. Where is the money going? The second round of K through twelve federal stimulus money, forty-three million dollars, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's going to be your second round. The third round money, ninety-eight million dollars, two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, one hundred and nineteen dollars. That is your third round. Tell me that you cannot afford to give us a twelve hundred dollar pandemic bonus ASAP, a four point five raise for next year. Twelve hundred dollar bonus, two parts, and you need to raise the minimum wage of this district, a phase in three years to fifteen dollars an hour. Four percent is just not going to do it. It needs to go better. And you have the funds to do it. You need to do this for the working people of this district. It's time for you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My name is Veroni Hernandez, and I am speaking to you as president of the Socorro American Federation of Teachers, representing over two thousand S I S D employees. Last budget workshop, I made a Socorro A F T salary proposal that in consideration to this unprecedented COVID nineteen situation, Socorro I S D considered a COVID relief stipend of one thousand dollars payable ASAP during this twenty twenty-one school year. Socorro A F T further proposed, for the year twenty-one, twenty-two, a four percent salary increase to all employees, inclusive of a step increase, and a one thousand dollar retention bonus to be paid in December of twenty twenty-one. We also propose that support employees need to be paid at a minimum of fifteen dollars per hour, starting salary, that's a living wage. In further review, from the last budget presentation from Mr. Resa, it shows slightly that S I S D shrunk their, their projection for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two deficit. They are now projecting a nine point eight million. Not a significant chart, change, but the projection may change again before the final budget is approved. And in the past, we know that you've, that they've over projected the budget deficits on a regular basis. They're updated, they updated their anticipated twenty twenty-two revenues from the February budget workshop, now showing about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in projected local revenue, almost one million dollars additional in projected state revenues from February's workshop, and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in projected federal revenues. They projected a total increase in budgeted revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty-two over budget revenues from twenty twenty-one of point five eight percent. Actual historical figures based on recent past audits, however, shows the district typically sees year-to-year total revenue increases of between four percent and six percent or higher. It remains to be seen if the current projections are accurate, but the district's trend indicates that its budgeting practices are very conservative. In addition, the influx of additional COVID relief funding can help relieve pressure on the district and allow S I S D to be creative and expanding programs to help students recover from a pandemic year, as well as ensuring that they retain experienced educators and staff, which will be critical to students' social and emotional, as well as academic well-being. Again, we urge you to consider our proposal tonight, a proposal which was done by a thorough professional digestion of the district's budget, not just wanting to offer a higher percentage or any higher amount than any other proposals. Remember, our district is a district of endless opportunities. Therefore, our focus should be on making sure that our children and our employees come first.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
All right, my OCD kicks in. Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I am Selena Stiles, Director of Human Resources for Support Personnel. And I am here this evening to present the proposed compensation plan for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. School districts review five different areas to determine salaries. We want to be competitive within our market, create equity amongst employees, invest in our employees, and maintain a plan that will help us recruit and retain talent. Administration recommends a two percent increase off the calculated midpoint, inclusive of the step, for employees paid on the teacher or counselor salary scale, which includes teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors. This is our current salary scale comparison for teachers against Eastleta and El Paso I S D. As you can see on the next slide, in comparison with the employee contribution, our district does provide them, our, our district contributes the most on behalf of their employees across the board, and that's that first row there on top. And then this, this. And then, this slide includes the benefits with the salary as part of the compensation plan, and we do have the information for both East Leda and El Paso. So, as you can see, Socorro is just below East Leda for starting salary, and then we do pass both districts. Right around 20 years, they pass us, and then we pass them again at 25. And this is still including the benefits. For 2122, I did do an estimation if East Leda and El Paso were to provide a 2% increase as well as what we're recommending to include their benefit comparison. So, as you can see, Socorro will have a lower starting rate for teachers than East Leda. However, once we surpass that, we do surpass all other districts. And again, this still is including their benefit contribution. And this is just an estimation, if they give a 2% increase. A comparison of the employee and family plan. As you can see, our district employees for the premier plan only pay $740. For YASD, it's $1,040, and for El Paso ISD, it's $1,954. For all other pay families, administration is recommending a 2% increase off the midpoint of their respective pay grade for paraprofessionals, including TIAAs, temporary instructional aides and pre-K supports, auxiliary, including our temporary crossguards and monitors, and technology employees, the health clinic, instructional support, police services, and administrative employees. In addition to the 2% proposed salary increase, employees will receive a $500 one-time lump sum payment. The employees included in this category include the employees I just listed with the addition of permanent subs and priority substitutes. Administration recommends approval of the 2021-2022 compensation plan.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Is there any questions for Ms. Stiles?
President Nahara, I do have a question. Ms. Stiles, we've been looking at, and we had a budget workshop a few weeks ago in looking at the compensation recommendation, looking at the compensation plan. If we were to approve, as is on the table at the 4%, what is that going to do for our minimum hourly salaries? How much, mas o menos, is that going to bump us up?
Quite a bit. Double. Because we're proposing 2%, and if you all are going with 4, so it would increase it significantly. I don't have that information in front of me. But we can get that to you.
Okay. Maybe, and I guess in my mind, I'm thinking about, you know, what our minimum salary is. You know, if we go with a 4% at the midpoint range, mas o menos, does anybody, I mean, my brain... I cannot count by my fingers anymore, folks. Does anybody have a calculator? Because I got fractions now.
Are you referring to the teachers?
No, the, I'm sorry, not salary, hourly employees.
Hourly employees.
Hourly employees.
What would their midpoint be?
Like, for example, right now, we've heard minimum is what?
$725.
Okay, so, $725. If we were to go with a 4% off midpoint, even if it was just a 4% off minimum, what's that going to bump us up to?
It's going to depend on the pay grade they're in, because the midpoint is relative to the pay grade that they're in. So, for that group of employees, it's a 401. I don't know the midpoint off the top of my head. 29 cents.
29 cents, okay. So, that would bring us up from...
$725 to about $7...
50, mas o menos.
More or less?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I do have a motion. Mr. Gatta made a motion for 4% seconded by Mr. Ganneta. But this motion does not include the lump sum payment.
Yes, there was a motion for 4% and a $1,000 lump sum payment for December.
I apologize, I did not hear that. I'm sorry, you said $1,000?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Gatta, seconded by Mr. Ganneta, for a 4% employee compensation with a $1,000 payment. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Item 7C, discussion and possible action to approve a board resolution authorizing one-time lump sum payment as COVID relief to eligible district employees. Mr. Campoya.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer. In separate cover tonight, you all should have received a resolution that we worked with, with our legal counsel. I'm not going to read the whole resolution for you. As you all know, the President of the United States back in March declared a national emergency due to the COVID-19. You all had already approved a resolution prior to this one to pay employees who were not getting compensated due to the closure. So, tonight, we are requesting your approval for a different type of resolution. And I'll read the last part on the second page of the resolution, where it says that "The Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District authorizes a one-time lump sum payment of wages specified below to the following classifications of employees affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, closures, and reduced work schedules. One, employees currently employed as of April 20, 2021, and working in the following classifications shall receive a lump sum payment in the amount of $1,000. Employees in the administrative, teacher, counselor, librarian, nurses, health clinic, technology, paraprofessional, and auxiliary pay families." So, the pay families encompass a lot of employees. And then, B, temporary crossing guards, temporary cafeteria monitors, temporary instructional aides, permanent substitute teachers, and pre-K instructional supports. So, the resolution is presented to you all for approval.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion to move.
I have a motion by Mr. Gatta and a second by Mr. Ganneta. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
President Nahara. Mr. Campoya, this is for this school year, yes?
That is correct. We, working with Mr. Ressa, were expecting to pay employees at the end of May.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, hourly, paraprofessional, auxiliary, mid-month May, professionals, end of month May.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Campoya. Item 7D, consider approval of Eastlake High School sports lighting. Mr. Eington?
Okay, I'm going to take my mask off. My glasses are fogging. Getting hot. Okay. Good afternoon, again, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. On page 95 is the Eastlake High School sports lighting competitive sale proposal that we put out. We had two company proposals on it. We did our review of it, and we are recommending that the administration, or the board considers recommending Kendrick Electric Company to do the sports lighting for Eastlake High School in the amount of $688,220. This also includes contingency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ganneta and a second by Mr. Morales. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 7E, consider approval of Pebble Hills High School field modifications and sports lighting. Mr. Eington?
Yes, on page 98 of your booklet, we also put this project out for competitive sale proposal. We received two proposals, and the administration is recommending the award of this project to Spartan Construction in the amount of $913,035.10, which also includes contingency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, who was the first?
I was.
He's just got a booming voice. He overpowered me.
Agreed.
I have... I'm sorry. I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. One, well, no, you've still got two more.
Two more.
Item 7F, consider approval of final contract sum of Montwood High School Improvement Sports Lighting Package. One, Mr. Eington?
Yes, as I told you during the facility report, we are taking partial acceptance to these projects. And this is one of them with Montwood High School, where we have completed the work on the sports lighting package. And through the policy CV, construction company, I mean, facility and planning is supposed to report to the district after our due diligence and tell you that we find that the work has been completed and that to make the final payment, we have to bring it to the board. So, for Montwood Improvement Sports Lighting Package, number one, the original contract was $1,173,502. A deductive change order of $222,159.25 has been executed and signed by Dr. Espinoza with the final contract sum of $951,342.75, making the final payment on this particular package Administration recommends...
Motion to approve. Second.
I'm sorry, that was Mr....
Don't ever say never second anything for Montwood, all right, Mr.?
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Mr. Ganneta. I'm sorry, Mr. Eington, will you repeat that final price for me?
The final contract sum, $951,342.75.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 7G, consider approval of inter-local agreement between the County of El Paso and Socorro ISD related to the extension of Bob Hope Drive, provision of stormwater facilities and necessary exchange real property pursuant to the special warranty deed from Socorro ISD to the County of El Paso. Mr. Eington?
Yes, I have reported this on a couple occasions and brought it up to the Facility Committee during our meetings. And we have finally received some documentation from the county back on March 29. The county had the inter-local agreement and the special warranty deed approved. And this has to do with SAC number two. As you can see, Bob Hope is up in the upper portion, comes across diagonally, and then it goes across the desert. The red line is the district property. Through the negotiation with the legal counsel's help, the county will construct through all the improvements to Bob Hope through our property. And it will continue, Bob Hope will continue across the desert. The road here is Mission Ridge, and you can see that Bob Hope is completed on the right-hand side of Mission Ridge, and that's where our new combo school is being constructed. So, eventually, Bob Hope is going to take that similar crossing across there. Tight end of this is the stormwater detention at Drogen, where we're granting them some of the property to do the detention upon that Drogen. I do have the signed warranty deed. I do not have the inter-local agreement. I've got it signed by the county judge, but attorneys don't sign paperwork for some reason. So, I'm waiting on them to sign that so we can so we can present that. But administration recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second, Mr. Mina?
I was.
I have a motion by Mr. Morales and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Ganneta?
Since it's going through our property, are they going to keep maintaining it? It's not going to have anything to do with us if...
Yes, our property ends... I don't... I should have...
I know it jumps over to the other side, but they'll maintain it, will never come back and say that it's our road all of a sudden?
No, it's a part of the...
Because you know how that, you know, that's happened before.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So, they'll take care of it, any damage, anything they...
Right.
I have another question.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Thank you.
Item 7H, discussion and possible action regarding resolution for ESER funds. As many of you know, school districts were supposed to receive federal funds, and ESER I funds were supplanted by the state for the state's budget. So, we did not receive that money. This resolution that I am asking the board to consider tonight deals with ESER II and ESER III funds. We have not received these funds. We don't know if we're going to receive these funds. They're in the hands of the state legislature, and they can decide stipulations on the funds. TEA can put stipulations on the funds. We are asking, in this resolution, Governor Abbott, the state legislature, and TEA to give these funds, these funds intended for public education, that this money goes to our school districts. And now, I'll read the resolution. I'm going to try to, it's really small print. Socorro ISD Board of Trustees Resolution Regarding ESER Funds Allocated to SISD. Whereas the federal government has allocated elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds to Texas through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Applications Act, which is CRSAR-SER II, and the American Rescue Plan, which is ARPERSER III. Whereas the state of Texas has received or will receive these funds allocations that are intended to supplement the needs of Texas school districts as they support the unfinished learning and social, emotional needs of the students we serve. Whereas local education agencies in other states have already received their allocations and planning amounts, and Texas has not allocated these funds to local education agencies to allow for planning and budgeting to address unfinished learning for the children of Texas. Whereas Socorro ISD has purchased personal protective equipment, digital devices, cleaning and sanitation medical supplies, and additional personnel to ensure social distancing, health and safety to keep SISD safe. We've allocated resources to provide equitable instruction to students learning both in person and remotely, and provided additional professional development to support teachers as they accelerate and personalize instruction for all students. Whereas the needs of Texas schools and its children are paramount concern to the people of Texas in the long-term economic and cultural aspects of the future of our state and our nation. Whereas each state shall make allocations to local educational agencies in an expedited and timely manner, and to the extent practicable, no later than 60 days after the receipt of such funds. no later than 60 days after the receipt of such funds. Whereas in Texas, there has been a delay of the allocation of these funds and the initial discussions indicate these funds will supplant funds already designated for districts rather than supplementing the funds local education agencies should already receive and are entitled to the purpose of addressing unfinished learning. Whereas there is discussion about how the Texas Education Agency may add additional requirements above and beyond the federal guidelines related to allowable partners and technical assistance providers with whom local education agencies can enter into agreements for support services. Whereas Socorro ISD works tirelessly to treat and educate all students as if they were our own children, and provides endless opportunities to ensure that all students are prepared for college, careers, and life. Whereas local government is more efficient, effective, and responsive to its citizens than state governments or regulators from Austin. Yet state government and regulators continue to erode the traditional local control of Texas public school districts to the detriment of Texas students, teachers, administrators, parents, taxpayers, board members, and local school districts statewide. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District respectfully ask and recommends that Governor Greg Abbott, the Texas Legislature, and the Texas Education Agency ensure all supplemental funds allocated from the federal government flow directly to local education agencies without additional restrictions beyond what the federal government has stipulated, and that the Texas Education Agency utilize these funds to supplement funding to school districts, and does not supplant and provide these funds in place of funds already due the district through the foundation school program and available school fund, and that the Texas Education Agency does not attach additional restrictions and extend their control in place of local control on how these funds can best be utilized in districts across the state and with such diversity. Be it resolved and approved by the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahara, boy, I just, I just got all sorts of comments today. I, I think it's important for us to truly keep track of those House bills that are being presented in legislature right now. Because as we heard last few weeks ago at the, at our budget workshop, Mr. Ressa presented these House bills, and essentially, if one of those bills passes, that could put that stakeholder group that included our, what's his name?
That state board in charge of?
It, but it wasn't, it wasn't all the state board. It was our lieutenant governor. It was, you know, all these other people that are going to tell districts how we can use that money. We already know what we need to use it on. But I, I think it's very important for us to make sure we're keeping track of that legislation to make sure. Because I, I think the other thing that we found out with that legislation or that, that proposed legislation is they could hold off on deciding that right now. You know, because it even said, and, and I know Ms. Nahara, you're, you're up on it. Mr. Ressa shared it with us, but they're even indicating that there may be an extension or, you know, how it's going to bud, how it's going to impact the budget later. So I, I think that's very important for, you know, our community to also kind of keep track of, of that legislation. Because again, that's money that the federal government has allocated to districts, and the state has not released it. And as we saw with the first package, they supplanted. You know, they said, oh, we're giving you this, but we're taking away this, so... I don't know, I just think it's something that's, it's very important for our community to also, you know, keep track of that legislation to, to ensure that, you know, we're, we know what the government is doing and...
And reach out to the state legislators. Let them know this board is doing our part tonight, but it is very important for, as individuals and as a community, that we let our legislatures know our feelings on this, about what's best for our school district. With that, I do...
President, I don't, if I'm not, I, I do want to echo what, what you read there in the resolution, and also what trustee Rodriguez mentioned. You know, with this pandemic, as everyone knows, you know, students are behind. It's going to cost money to catch them up. And in our school district, we do a lot more with less. But if those fundings are not given to, to our school district specifically, you know, but it, same thing applies to all schools across the state. You know, it would, it would have a serious impact. So, you know, as was mentioned, we continue to speak with legislators. As you mentioned, trustee Rodriguez, President Nahara, she's always on top of the different bills. We got to watch this bill, we got to call this person, call this person, so thank you. Also, the, the associations do a wonderful job as well of, of, of making sure, hey, make, got to speak to these different legislators and, and tell them, you know, that, hey, this funding needs to come here. You know, an example is the, the charter school fight, you know, the first 10 years now. This board, with the help of the associations, continues to fight charter schools because that funding, when the child leaves, it takes the funding, it impacts our funding. So this is going to be no different. Our school district will continue to work together to make sure that we continue to keep fighting for the funding that our students and our community need and deserve. So thank you, President Nahara.
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item eight, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss and consider the Level III grievance filed by AD to discuss personnel and real estate matters, and to consider superintendent's evaluation under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. We are adjourned, the time is 7:37. We are back in regular session, the time is 9:28. We will continue with number nine, new business. A discussion and possible action regarding Level III grievance appeal filed by AD. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you. So at the March meeting, you received the grievance summary in the packet for the appeal filed by Ms. Doran Wood. You had the month until this meeting, now in April, to make a decision and decide whether you needed additional information or if the board wanted to have a hearing and receive additional oral arguments. And we discussed the nature of the grievance and the relief requested in closed session. It's a recommendation of administration that the grievance either be denied or that no action be taken, but it's up to the board to make a determination on how you want to proceed.
Okay, there is no action to be taken on this item.
Thank you.
And nine B, consider approval of superintendent's annual evaluation. Superintendent's evaluation has been completed and presented to him.
Motion to approve as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Geta to accept the superintendent's evaluation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 9:30.